I call to order the December 11th regular business meeting of Waynesboro City Council. I would like to welcome everyone this evening. If you wish to speak during the citizen comment period, please sign up on one of the sheets in the back of chambers. And Mr. Short, would you please lead us in the pledge?
My pleasure.
My pledge is allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Item three is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes five to zero. And thank you for your motion to pass. I appreciate that. Okay, item four is matters from mayor. It's been a busy few weeks, and I know my colleagues have quite a bit to share, so I'll just share one of the highlights of my week. Last week, Mr. Short and I, I believe Tuesday, had the privilege of attending the Winter Wonderland program at Wayne Hills preschool, where we were treated to delightful winter songs from the students, followed by gingerbread house decorating. We both left with warm hearts and our clothing covered in icing. Item five is matters from council members. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I do. We, Mayor Williams and Councilman Short, myself, participated in the Waynesboro Christmas parade along with the Parks and Rec this year. And just my own personal note, I think that's probably one of the best parades I've seen Waynesboro put together in a lot of years. It was very successful, a lot of participants. One in particular, I wanted to point out, and everybody did a great job, so I'm not trying to single one out, but one kind of went above and beyond. I made a visit this past Wednesday down to Bradley Towing and Trucking. If any of y'all were at the Christmas parade and saw their trucks in there, they had a big gooseneck trailer on there that was full of bags of toys and loaded with bicycles. And they went through the crowd handing out bicycles to kids and big March packaged toys. And they also did at the Stewart's Draft Parade, from what I understand. And to me, the amount of money they invested to put a smile on a kid's face, I think deserves recognition. And I think we're going to look forward to recognize them for their efforts, maybe down the road a little bit, too. But I hope that inspires other businesses and all to, you know, remember, one of the most important things about Christmas time is sending smiles on kids' faces. So, you know, good to you, Bradley Towing, if anybody sees them, or if you need towing or trucking, you know, think about what they did for the community when you need services.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just echo that. I think the parade went off flawlessly. Thousand candy canes, at least the Short family went through, along with my colleagues. And it was new route this year, but I think it worked out really, really well, to the point that I will do a better job of alerting folks that there's no reason to really bunch up over at Arch and Wayne, because, boy, there's a bunch of people bunched up over there with the whole stretch of Wayne. But that was great. Echoed that. And also, too, would echo Mayor Williams' comment about Wayne Hills. Just a fantastic event, and just a privilege to spend some time with some of the kids over at Wayne Hills and decorate and create two new buddies along the way over the holidays. So, really appreciated that opportunity. Also, Mr. Allen and I attended the ribbon cutting for the Virginia Museum of Natural History trailer, which is just located over Constitution Park. So, it's a teaser, if you will. If you've not had an opportunity to go down there and get as excited as we are about the arrival of the Virginia Museum of Natural History, this is your opportunity to do so. Just a really, really neat asset for our community. And then Mayor Williams and I, we were able to attend also the Fireman's Annual Banquet this year in honor to be in attendance and recognize the selfless service of our heroes at the Fire Department. So, again, appreciated that opportunity as well.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, I have one comment. On behalf of the city council, I'd like to recognize and congratulate Leslie Tate, who is our Director of Community Development, on her recent completion of Virginia Women's Municipal Leadership Institute. The program requires participants to examine and develop their leadership style and capacity and focus on problem solving and skill building in essential municipal disciplines such as budget, finance, strategic planning, and council manager relations. Additionally, the program covers negotiation skills and mastermind problem solving, all with the objective of preparing women for executive leadership roles in local government. So, congratulations, Leslie.
Okay. That brings us to item six, and that's consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda passes five to zero. Item seven, which is probably going to be my favorite thing to recognize tonight, is to recognize the participants in the Girls on the Run program sponsored by the Parks and Recreation Department. I'd like to call on Amanda Reeves, please.
Good evening. Hi, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We have a full house, looks like. My name's Amanda Reeve. I'm the Race Director and the Athletic Coordinator for Waynesboro Parks and Recreation. I'm here tonight to tell you about the Girls on the Run program. Girls on the Run is a national program designed for third through fifth grade girls with the mission to inspire all girls to build their confidence, kindness, and decision-making skills through an evidence-based program. The lessons instill valuable life skills, including important connection between physical and emotional health. Parks and Recreation provided oversight and leadership alongside Waynesboro teachers to establish the program in all four of Waynesboro's elementary schools. The Waynesboro School Division was the only district participating in the fall season that had all four, all of their elementary schools to participate, which is a pretty big accomplishment. The 10-week program concluded with a regional 5K running event on November 12th in Charlottesville with a total of over 250 girls, including our 63 girls from Waynesboro. So, we're just here to give a big congratulations to the 63 girls and the 14 coaches who participated for fall of 2023, and proud to honor the girls that are here tonight and those that couldn't be here.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just going to say a few words, and then I'll have everyone come forward if they'd like to get a photograph.
Okay, thank you.
So, does any members of council have anything they would like to say? Yes?
No.
Okay. Okay, my husband and I both attended one of the practices for the 5K run, and I believe it was a 5K run that they were prior to the actual run. We went to cheer on my daughter-in-law Jenna and my granddaughter Mila, who also is involved in the program. I was amazed at how supportive the girls were of each other, and I just loved how those who finished their run would go back and encourage the girls that were still running. This was a wonderful program, and thank you to those who helped make Girls on the Run a success. And let's give you guys a break. And thank you, Amanda, for all of your hard work. I would love if you would like, all the girls that participated, if you'd like to come forward, and the teachers that also helped, come forward and get a photograph, and then council members join in behind them. Okay.
Great job, team.
Gotta get a little taller, Dwayne.
Get some parents to get some shots.
Gets too quiet during these pictures, y'all, so let's give another round of applause.
Did everyone get their flag?
I'm gonna get one twice.
Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Do not have to say for the rest of the meeting, unless you're really bored this evening. Thank you. There's a lot of hands to shake.
It's gonna empty out. Real quick.
Mike, it's 5:01. I couldn't get this to adjust. Okay.
You beat it, everybody.
I would've stayed back here, but they probably were taller than me.
I wasn't gonna say it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're all good.
Bye, Mila.
Oh.
Oh.
Thank you.
All right.
I think that's preferential treatment.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Give everyone just a moment more, and then we'll continue. Okay. Item eight is to receive a presentation of the city's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. I'd like to call on our Assistant City Manager for Finance, Mr. Cameron McCormick.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The Virginia State Code requires that the city have an audit annually and produce financial statements that are compliant with the guidance and pronouncements issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Boards. The purpose of the audit is to obtain opinions from an external party that the financial statements produced by the city are materially correct and can be relied upon by their users. Users being citizens, city council, school board, staff, rating agencies, and anyone else who might make decisions based on their presentation. The audit begins just before year end, in June, for preliminary work, and wraps up towards the end of November each year. Staff's responsibility is to provide information to the auditor and produce our financial statements, and the auditor's responsibility is to opine on those statements. It is important distinction that the financial statements are the city's, and the auditor provides the opinion. In front of you this evening are three documents. You have the annual comprehensive financial report, which is the big bound report, a management letter, and a letter to those charged with governance. The length of the ACFA, which is now about 170 pages, presents a comprehensive review. However, a couple of items of note are the section that starts on page seven and goes through 16, and that's the management discussion and analysis. The MDNA is intended to be a standalone document that you can lift, in a liftable section, that one can read and get a quick glimpse at the financial well-being of the city. The basic financial statements start on page 17 and go through 29. The primary statements we use for decision-making are on pages 20 and 21, or Exhibit 5, and 25 and 26, or Exhibit 7. The city uses the unassigned fund balances from the general fund and the unrestricted net positions, from the proprietary funds to help fund the budget needs that are capital or one-time in nature, as well as provide a quick guide to the overall financial health of the city. The notes of the financial statements begin on page 30 and go through page 95. The footnotes provide important context to the financial statements about things like accounting policies, fixed assets, receivables, long-term debts, pensions, and other post-employment benefits. The notes the city denote the city generally references most frequently begins on page 48 and relates to long-term debt. The current-year payments of long-term liabilities have budget impacts each year, and we use the corresponding amortization schedules to help inform debt capacity, budget capacity, and plan for future projects. Ms. Argonbright from Brown Edwards is here with us this evening. She'll go through the last little bit of the ACFA, and then also talk a little bit about the management letter and the letter to those charged with governance.
Hello. I'm Megan Argonbright. I'm a partner at Brown Edwards and Company. We do your audit. This is year two of us doing your audit, and we love it. So, I'll start by saying Cameron did incredible job just telling you exactly what we do, right? He even used key words like materiality and juicers, and so it was super helpful. I'll also point out that Cameron and his staff make the report, the ACFA, the big one, okay? I point that out because I have three clients in total that do their own report now. It is a rarity. But I'll also say, your reports are all the better for it, because how much better to have the person whose job is to oversee your financials than to prepare your financial statements? So, it is a big lift for a finance department to do their own ACFA, but, so I think it's worth noting. That being said, we come in and we do your audit. Like Cameron said, it starts in June, and I'm here in December. So, it is a six-month process every single year, and there's a lot that goes into that. And so, thanks to the city and school staff for the thousands of questions that we ask when we are getting all this together. My team also consists of Taylor Guthrie, who helped run the job and kind of keep everything going and all together. So, obviously, I did not do all of this on my own. In fact, I really just swoop in, do the presentation, and get to take credit for it. So, we did submit everything to the Auditor of Public Accounts. It is due on the 15th, which is Friday, so everything is turned in, and we are complete. We did issue a clean opinion, unmodified. That's the one you want. We also issue a yellowbook opinion, which is in relation to your basic financial statement opinion, which means that we gain an understanding of your internal controls. We don't test your internal controls for that reason. We're just gaining an understanding to make sure that they are properly in place. And we do walkthroughs. We did not have any, what we call material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, no such things. So, everything was very clean. We also issue a uniform guidance opinion, which is because the city and schools receive more than $750,000 every year in federal awards. This year, as with everywhere, we tested SLFRF, which is the ARPA funding. We tested ESSER, which is the Education Stabilization Fund. Those are both pandemic money that were poured into the localities and school systems, so we tested those. And we also tested Special Aid as part of the single audit. Had no findings on any of those programs. We also have to do procedures for state compliance. The Auditor of Public Accounts gives us a very long list of things we have to look at every year, and we did not have any issues with any of those procedures either. In addition, that's all in the big report, so save a little bit of time. But another deliverable that we do is the letter to those charged with governance, which is you guys. And this letter is pretty standard, pretty boilerplate, but that's because there's a lot of things that we are required to tell you. And one of those, for instance, is that your financial statements have estimates, right? Obviously, your pension, your OPEB, those are giant estimates. We don't know those numbers for sure, but we do the very, very best, and the actuaries do their very best to figure out what those numbers are. There also was a new standard implemented this year. To be honest, not a huge deal, but it takes a lot of legwork to get there, all the same. Very similar to leases. Last year, we had to implement one for subscription-based information technology agreements, which is the softwares, right? So, the IT departments for both the city and schools helped with the audit significantly this year, coming up with lists of what could be recorded. In addition to that, on the back of that letter is the Management Representation Letter. This is about six pages that says, like, we ask you, we ask a ton of questions. I always say 1,001 questions, and then we make you sign a letter that says you answer them all to the best of your ability and as accurate as you can. But that is attached to that letter. And I only say that because sometimes it's kind of interesting to read such a thing, to be like, oh, like, there's a lot in there. So, in addition to your management's discussion and analysis, the management rep letter is also kind of a good area to just to read, give you an idea of how involved the audit is. So, any questions?
No. Are there any questions? No. Thank you so much, and good job. Okay. There's no action required tonight. That was just for informational purposes. Item nine is to consider adopting an ordinance appropriating $662,100 for the purchase of real property, 501 West Broad Street. This ordinance, having been introduced and discussed at the November 27th meeting, may receive final consideration tonight. If there are no comments, I will call the question. All in favor of the ordinance appropriating the funds to purchase 501 West Broad Street, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, four to one, and passes. Item 10 is to consider adopting an ordinance relocating the Office of Voter Registrar. The ordinance, having been introduced and discussed at the November 27th meeting, may receive final consideration tonight, and so I'll call the question. All in favor of the ordinance relocating the Office of Voter Registrar, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes five to zero. Item 11 is to receive a presentation from Kim Byrd, Executive Director of the Waynesboro Redevelopment and Housing Authority, regarding WRHA programs. I will call on Mr. Hamp.
Yes, Madam Mayor. This evening, Ms. Byrd will provide an overview of the organization and its program. You're likely aware, housing policy and affordable housing are programs pressing local governments in Virginia. And I thought, given our two new members on council and some, the regional study that's being conducted regarding housing, it would be an appropriate time to sort of refresh our knowledge of the RHA's programming and sort of refresh our acquaintance in that regard. So, Ms. Byrd was kind enough to join us.
Okay.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. As stated, my name is Kim Byrd. I'm with the Waynesboro Redevelopment Housing Authority. I think it's been a while since we have been in front of city council, just to remind you all what we do and what we're here for. So, of course, the Waynesboro Housing Authority, we were created in 1962, and we have two primary programs. One is our public housing, and that is we provide housing for low-income residents of the city of Waynesboro. We have 188 units throughout the city, and they're located in Springdale, which is 77 units for primarily elderly and disabled. And then we've got apartment complexes, 10th Street, New Hope, Delphine, Ivanhoe, and King Avenue. I'm sure all of you are familiar with those. In addition to that, we also administer what's called the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and that is where we subsidize participants with private landlords. They pay a portion of their rent based on their income, and then we pay the other portion. We have about 375 under lease, and the majority of those are in the city of Waynesboro, because we are the Waynesboro Housing Authority. Probably about 25% of them are single-family residences, and the other 75% of them are apartment complexes or duplexes or townhouses, such as that, throughout the city. The Housing Authority, as you're aware, is here to provide safe, decent, and affordable housing for low-income residents of the city of Waynesboro. Another big part of the Housing Authority is we're here to develop and advocate for affordable workforce housing. And I think that's a big part of what we need to do, is to have more affordable housing. And that's why the Housing Authority has a nonprofit affiliate called the South River Development Corporation. And that's how a lot of authorities are able to develop affordable housing. So, the South River Development Corporation, that was created as a nonprofit affiliate of the Waynesboro Housing Authority in 1997, and we currently have about 200 affordable housing units throughout the city. I'm sure you all are familiar with those. We have Fairfax Hall. We have Mountain View Apartments. We have the Ross Museum with the six apartments over top the Ross Museum. And then we also have South River Properties, which is a few properties scattered throughout the city, some single-family homes and duplexes and townhouses. And again, that's our affordable housing. One of the reasons why I wanted to come and speak with you all, as Mr. Hamp pointed out, there's a real need for affordable housing. That's your workforce housing. That's your housing where working, the working class really need to live. A lot of people confuse low-income housing with affordable housing, and there's certainly a big difference in the two. You know, as far as low-income housing, that's where people are subsidized and where the vouchers subsidize. But the affordable housing is more where the working class, people who need more affordable housing and not low-income housing, those are more your low-to-moderate income residents, not necessarily the low-income residents. So, I feel like there's certainly advantages for the Housing Authority, as well as our nonprofit, South River Development Corporation, can partner with the city to provide the affordable housing that the city of Waynesboro needs.
with private landlords. They pay a portion of their rent based on their income, and then we pay the other portion. We have about 375 under lease, and the majority of those are in the city of Waynesboro, because we are the Waynesboro Housing Authority. Probably about 25% of them are single-family residences, and the other 75% of them are apartment complexes or duplexes or townhouses such as that throughout the city. The Housing Authority, as you're aware, is here to provide safe, decent, and affordable housing for low-income residents of the city of Waynesboro. Another big part of the Housing Authority is we're here to develop and advocate for affordable workforce housing. And I think that's a big part of what we need to do, is to have more affordable housing. And that's why the Housing Authority has a nonprofit affiliate called the South River Development Corporation. And that's how a lot of authorities are able to develop affordable housing. So, the South River Development Corporation, that was created as a nonprofit affiliate of the Waynesboro Housing Authority in 1997. And we currently have about 200 affordable housing units throughout the city. I'm sure you all are familiar with those. We have Fairfax Hall. We have Mountain View Apartments. We have the Ross Museum with the six apartments over top the Ross Museum. And then we also have South River Properties, which is a few properties scattered throughout the city, some single-family homes and duplexes and townhouses. And again, that's our affordable housing. One of the reasons why I wanted to come and speak with you all, as Mr. Hamp pointed out, there's a real need for affordable housing. That's your workforce housing. That's your housing where working, the working class really need to live. A lot of people confuse low-income housing with affordable housing, and there's certainly a big difference in the two. You know, as far as low-income housing, that's where people are subsidized and where they're voucher subsidized. But the affordable housing is more where your, the working class, people who need more affordable housing and not low-income housing, those are more your low-to-moderate income residents, not necessarily the low-income residents. So I feel like there's certainly advantages for the Housing Authority, as well as our nonprofit, South River Development Corporation, can partner with the city to provide the affordable housing that the city of Waynesboro needs.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
I'll be glad to answer any questions that you all might have as far as statistics or any type of information that you would need.
No.
On the affordable housing.
Yes, sir.
Do you build in a new home usually, or do you buy an old home and fix it up?
Well, when I refer to affordable housing, I'm mainly referring to rental properties. When you really think about it, I know Waynesboro has a lot of building going on, a lot of new construction as far as apartment complexes and things like that. But those types of complexes are not really affordable for a lot of working-class people. You know, statistically, 30% of your income should be afforded for rent. And when you are looking at numbers such as two household, two-income household earning, say, $15 an hour, if you take that and you multiply that by 30%, the majority of the new apartment developments that are going up right now, that's not affordable for those folks. What I'm referring to is providing housing for people who are working at Walmart, or working at the gas stations, or working at Lowe's. Those, that's that type of affordable housing. And again, affordable housing isn't low-income housing. It's housing that's affordable for folks who are more of a median income.
So are you partnering with people to build these homes?
The complexes? That's what we're looking to do. A lot of-
So you just do complexes and not single-family?
Right now, we're not doing a lot of single-family homes. We're looking to provide more of a multifamily. The Housing Authority, again, we have our nonprofit arm, which is the South River Development Corporation, plus there's also different state and local organizations that we can partner with, just like with Fairfax Hall. I'm sure a lot of you all are aware that South River Development Corporation owns Fairfax Hall, and we're getting ready to renovate Fairfax Hall. And we do that with low-interest loans. We do that with partnerships with the Virginia Housing, used to be called VHDA, and now it's Virginia Housing, as well as Department of Housing and Community Development, and as well as Virginia Community Development Corporation. So it's those types of partnerships that we're able to form. There are tax credits that we're able to have access to, some like with Fairfax Hall, there are low-income tax credits, as well as historic tax credits. But if it's not historic, just like with Mountain View, I'm sure you all know where Mountain View is.
Oh, K College.
Cost from K College, yes. The South River Development Corporation owns Mountain View, and that was renovated with low-income tax credits. So it's those types of partnerships that we can form with other agencies, state agencies, in addition to, like I said, DHCD, Virginia Housing, that are able to provide the low-interest funding. Because what happens is, once you utilize those funds for either building or renovation, then they're rent-restricted. So that way, they're affordable. So as an example, someone who is living in a affordable housing complex that is rent-restricted and therefore income-restricted, so as an example, you can't have someone making $200,000 a year being able to rent an apartment in a complex that is rent-restricted and income-restricted. It's set aside for more of affordable housing for people who can afford it, based on the income-
The apartment's at the end of King Avenue in 800 block. Or those suburb, or they subsidize housing. Right before you get to Oakland Parkway, you know where the two line is, it's the apartment's back on King Avenue on the right-hand side.
Back on, yeah, right across from-
Across-
Yeah, that's, actually, that's public housing. The Waynesboro Housing Authority owns that. Yes. We, that was our last, in the 800, that was the last complex that the Housing Authority built. That was back in the late 90s. So, and that's actually public housing. So, and really, that's not really the direction that HUD is going anymore as far as building public housing. They'd much rather invest in the voucher program, so that way people can utilize the voucher on the private market with private landlords. And then they're also able to move with their voucher, port their voucher. That way, it's more mobile. You're welcome.
What income range covers the, you were talking about the difference between low-income and affordable housing. What income range, annual income, family income range is considered for affordable housing?
Okay, okay. So, let me just kind of look at my numbers here. So, just to give you kind of a generalization, for, to qualify for low-income housing or the voucher, you have to believe, you have to be below, say, it's called 50% median income. So basically, just to give you an idea, a family of four cannot make more than $42,000 and be eligible for public housing or to receive a voucher. So, the majority of the people who receive, not all, but the majority of the people who are eligible, meet the income limits for public housing or the voucher, would be people who are on Social Security, SSI, or single-income households, whether it be a single parent with children, or a two-adult household, maybe one works and the other one does not, maybe one receives Social Security and the other one works. Those are the types of income levels that you're looking at. Whereas, pretty much, a family of, let's say, a family of four who is affordable income, that would probably be someone that's over, say, $60,000 a year. But just to give you an example, and this is, again, purely an example, but I'd just like to kind of, for me, it's easier to understand if you have some real numbers. So, if you have, let's just say you have two adults, and they're both making $15 an hour, working 40 hours a week, okay? Say, two adults, two children, and they're both working $15 an hour, 40 hours a week, they're going to make gross about $62,000 a year, okay? Statistically, they should not spend more than 30% of their income for rent, because over that, you're considered rent burden. So that means those two people with two children should not spend more than $1,560 a month for rent, $1,560 a month in rent. They're going to have a very difficult time finding a place to rent in the city of Waynesboro for $1,560, a three-bedroom house or apartment. Very difficult time finding that. So that's one of the reasons why we really need more affordable housing. We truly do.
So I guess my sort of thoughts and comments aren't really relegated to, I think, a Q&amp;A, but maybe more to continue the conversation. I would be interested is, what's next? So, what are the priorities of the organization? What's your five-year plan? How do you create more opportunities? How do you expand the voucher program? How do you target demographics? How do you provide those services? How do you grow the services that the organization's responsible for?
Absolutely, yeah. And I think we should have that next conversation. Absolutely.
I'd also be interested in what, you know, what is the single greatest barrier, maybe the top three barriers that, as you see it, to expanding the work and growing the services?
Growing the services or growing the affordable housing?
All of the above.
All of the above.
Affordable housing, right? I mean, you said the market rate is the market rate in terms of the rental, right? So I think the voucher program lends itself to support that. So, I mean, I would be curious of, you know, if you had a, with a five-year plan, what are some of those objectives? How can our community council be supportive of that work? You know, what's, what's the big, what are the big rocks? What do they look like?
Absolutely, absolutely. No, I think that would be great. I'd love the opportunity to sit down and discuss that and further this conversation, and see exactly how the city would like to partner with the Housing Authority and the South River Development Corporation in doing that. I think there's a lot of, you know, barriers, you know, it's organizations like ours that provide the affordable housing, you know, the nonprofits that provide the affordable housing. Because when your developers come in, I mean, they're in it to make a profit. They're developers. They're not nonprofits. Whereas, housing authorities, that's our job. Our job is to provide safe, decent, affordable housing. Nonprofits, especially nonprofits that are housing providers, that's our job, is to provide that and to, you know, do it in a sense where it is providing the service and not in it to make a profit, which, again, that's what, that's what we do. And that's what we specialize in, is providing housing. And as you said, I mean, there's a lot of barriers to it. One of the other services that I think we really need to work on and provide a partnership with is also homelessness. I mean, that's, you know, an issue now as well, is homelessness. And that has a lot of barriers in itself because of various different environmental and mental health issues and things such as that. So it's, you know, an issue that I think is to the forefront now, you know, it's, you know, workforce housing is a real, it's the push now, is to provide more workforce housing for people who are, who are working and making minimum wage. Because, again, there's not enough subsidized housing to go around. There's not enough vouchers to go around. So it's the people that are, make too much income for that, but then make not enough income for the, the market-rate housing. So that's the need that we need to work towards.
I have a question, Kim. If a family qualifies for one of the affordable homes based on the rates that you gave us, and their income levels change maybe over the course of a year or two, how do you, how do you monitor that? And are they able to stay if, say, their income rises above the level that allowed them this home in the first place?
Sure. Depends on the program. You know, if they're in public housing or receiving the voucher, well, then their rent is based on their income, so their rent could fluctuate. Whereas, the Housing Authority determines what they can afford, and we verify everything, and their rent could change. If they're in affordable housing, whereas all the rents are the same, and they're not receiving any subsidy, then, no, there's really not a backup plan if something were to happen. Let's just say they lose their job. It's not that type of program. It's not a subsidized-type program.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you for your question.
Thank you. And I would love the opportunity to come back and speak with council and address some of the issues that you all would like to discuss.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Item 12 is to consider amending the operational guidelines for the Waynesboro Area Refuge Ministry Cold Weather Shelter Program. I'd like to call on our Director of Community Development, Ms. Tate.
Hi, good evening. So, Warm, the Waynesboro Area Refuge Ministry, has requested that the city amend the operational guidelines for the Warm Cold Weather Shelter Program. As I'm sure you're aware, the Cold Weather Shelter Program typically runs from Thanksgiving to Easter, and there are host facilities that operate generally from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM seven days a week. Host facilities are spread throughout the region, including Waynesboro, Augusta County, and the city of Stanton. The city of Waynesboro has adopted operational guidelines for facilities within city limits that participate in this program. Due to the relatively high fire risk and potential loss of life in hotels, motels, and transient lodging facilities, construction codes require stringent provisions for the protection of life in these types of occupancies. So the guidelines that Waynesboro developed provide basic and sufficient life safety measures for overnight housing of individuals in existing places of worship. The guidelines enable acceptable existing places of worship to provide the seasonal overnight stays as a host facility with the Warm Ministry without the stringent conversion of the occupancy classification. So the amendments proposed this evening are to increase the number of overnight guests that are permitted at a given host facility. So, the current guidelines do cap the number of overnight guests at a given facility to 20. And so, staff evaluated a request from Warm that occasionally they have more than 20 overnight guests, and have to operate an overflow site when they're here in Waynesboro at our facilities. So staff asked Warm to provide the various square footages at the four churches that operate currently within the city. And working with the building official and guidance that's provided through the building code, we evaluated all these existing facility square footages to look at accommodating such requests and what would be, what would fit within the life safety guidelines that were established, and also maybe provide a bit of flexibility. So what was determined was that for 1,000 square feet, you would have, that would be enough space for the 20 overnight guests. And then it would be ideal to have roughly 120 square feet for every additional overnight guest. And then also to create some consistency, so we wouldn't have various numbers throughout the city, we kind of decided to group these into tiers. So if the host facility has 2,200 square feet or more, then they could have a maximum of 30 overnight guests. If the host facility ranges from 1,600 square feet to 2,199 square feet, they could have a maximum of 25 overnight guests. And then anything less than 1,600 square feet would continue at the maximum of 20 guests. So then in addition to those amendments to increase the number of guests, staff also recommended increasing the number of required volunteers if the number of guests exceeds 20. So currently, and it was last year, I believe, or maybe even early this year, that we amended the guidelines that had a three-volunteer person requirement down to two. And this would be saying, if they were going above 20 overnight guests, they'd have to go back to having those three volunteers or attendants there. So, based on the calculations of the existing facilities, there would be some facilities that could operate at 30, but other facilities that would need to stay at 25 based on the square footage numbers. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No? Okay. All right. Is there a motion? Let's see, where are we? Is there a motion to approve the changes to the operational guidelines for Warm Cold Weather Shelter?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes five to zero. Item 13 is to consider introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 50 of the City Code Noise, and I will call on Mr. Hamp.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Obviously, the council is aware that we've been examining our noise ordinance as it relates specifically to commercial music venues, restaurants, and entertainment venues. These revisions that I'm going to present this evening do not apply to the enforcement of the noise ordinance and for residential complaints and in residential areas. We will continue to address those complaints in the same manner that we have since the last round of amendments. But the key features in the ordinance that's presented for your consideration this evening, there are four, I would think, central decision points, and we've tried to prepare an ordinance that meets the communication and preferences as we understand them. I would emphasize that if, after I work through this, you feel like that we've missed the mark, that this should be regarded as a starting point. We can make adjustments according to the preferences of council. So, we've done our best to try to hit the target to the best of our ability. So first is, we will move to a system of regulating noise from, again, from these entertainment venues through measurement of decibels. And we would establish a maximum decibel level of 75 that will be measured at the real property boundary of the business or entertainment venue that is closest to the residentially occupied property. Secondly, we would establish a cutoff period for noise that begins at 11:00 PM and continues until 1:00 PM the following day. And that limit applies uniformly for all seven days of the week. There had been some thought given to sort of a midweek to weekend allowance that would be higher. be higher, but the staff believes that this is, at least for now, having a uniform cutoff time is what we understood to be council's preference and what we recommend now. Establish a process that would allow for each business or entertainment venue to apply to the city manager for six time and/or decibel exemptions per calendar year for special events. So, recognizing that venues might attract a significantly popular band, or for occasions such as New Year's or Memorial Day, Fourth of July, there might be larger events that might warrant an exception to the ordinance. And finally, the ordinance establishes standards and procedures for using and testing sound level meters utilized in the enforcement of this article by the Waynesboro Police Department. So those are the four components of the ordinance that we would recommend amendment, and happy to respond to questions that you have at this time.
Okay. Any questions? No? No? Okay. So is there a motion to introduce the ordinance amending Chapter Fifty?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? Okay. This ordinance, having been introduced and seconded, will be discussed and received final consideration at the January eighth regular business meeting. Item fourteen is to consider introducing an ordinance authorizing dissolution of the Valley Alcohol Safety Program. Mr. Hamp.
In nineteen-eighty-seven, the city formed the Valley Alcohol Safety Action Program in conjunction with Augusta County and the city of Stanton. In two thousand and thirteen, Rockbridge County and the cities of Lexington and Buna Vista became members of the Valley Alcohol Safety Action Program. This summer, the State Level Commission on Alcohol Safety Action Program, or otherwise known as the Commission, assumed responsibility for our Valley program after the executive director and other staff members resigned. So for several board meetings, the local board, on which I represent the city, in consultation with the State Commission, have determined that it would be in the best interest of member localities to dissolve the organization, and our board or that board adopted a resolution stating as much. The law requires, however, that the member jurisdictions also vote or take action to authorize the dissolution, and this evening, you're presented an ordinance that makes such authorization. It requires two reads, the second of which would occur at our first meeting in January. In the meantime, the Commission is administering and will continue to administer programming until a more permanent succeeding program is identified. And that might be that the state would continue on indefinitely delivering service, or they might elect to merge our geography with another VASAP program in the area. Again, the ordinance that you have in front of you this evening would formally dissolve VASAP and provide a wind-up process for the organization's outstanding assets and liabilities. At the end of twelve months after the enactment of the ordinance, any remaining funds will be distributed to the former VASAP localities in equal shares. And frankly, I don't anticipate that there will be significant remaining funds at that time. It's worth noting that the localities have not been contributing financially to the operation of the program. They're funded largely by fees for service and a block grant that it receives from the Commission. This has been somewhat of a source of stress and concern because the services provided are pretty valuable to our residents who encounter either a need or a mandate to receive these services through the general district court or court system. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, are there any questions? No? Okay. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance authorizing the dissolution of the Valley Alcohol Safety Action Program? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? Okay, this ordinance, having been introduced, seconded, and discussed, will receive final consideration at the January eighth regular business meeting. Item fifteen is communication, correspondence, and calendar and comments from our city manager.
I don't have any of this.
Okay. Item sixteen is citizen comment, period. Do we have anyone signed up to-
We do. Mr. Phil Klon.
Okay. And just as a reminder, I'd like you to state your name and address for our records, and you'll have four minutes to address council.
My name is Phil Klon, and I live at eleven-fifty Sherwood Avenue in Waynesboro. And I can tell you right now, I don't need anywhere near four minutes. I'm gonna make it quick. I understand that on this, behind the building down here at Wayne and Broad, the horse is already out of the barn. So, what I say or anybody else says, it's a done deal. So I guess I'm wasting my breath, but I can breathe while I'm talking, so I'm just gonna talk for a couple seconds here. Does the registrar need a better facility? Yes. Does this building meet the needs? Yeah, it's a nice building and really will meet the needs. Is the city paying a fair price at six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars? I don't know. I guess what surprised me is that the city is willing to pay that price for it, and I just have to say, what's the big hurry? Could the city have waited for it to go on the open market and perhaps save ten, fifteen, twenty percent? I don't know. I can't imagine there being a long line of buyers willing to spend that kind of money for that building, which would have allowed the city to maybe make a more reasonable offer. I'm just saying. And so, that's all I've got to say about that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Cheryl Carey.
Hello, Cheryl Carey, eight-twenty Fairway Drive. And I just want to reiterate what Phil said. We are blown away by how much you spent on that building. Incredible. I came here tonight because the council voted to purchase five-oh-one West Broad Street for six-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand dollars. Two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand over the assessed value for a bank. How in demand is a bank? I don't think we're gonna have buyers fighting over it. I cannot fathom how the managers would advise council, or why the council would think paying over two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand. Overassessed value would be a good idea. We voted you in, all in, to protect our interests, not bankrupt us with poor decisions. I think the city is counting on tax money not yet realized from businesses moving in along with more citizens. When we could be paying down our debt, wouldn't that be a novel idea, not to have such a large debt? Cities do go bankrupt. Five-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand of the purchase price is due on June thirtieth, two-thousand-and-twenty-four. Will you be raising our taxes because we need more money to replenish the general fund you took the money out of? I'm not against having more space as we grow. I'm against spending money wastefully. You should have let this market decide the price, not listen to some seller saying he's giving you a deal. We pay accountants and managers to advise, and I don't know how anyone thought paying over two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars over the assessment was a brilliant idea. This news is spreading through the city. Citizens are hearing this, and bad news travels fast. I wanted to say this tonight because I wanted it documented online so people can review it on video. I want to thank Mr. Wood for voting against this waste. We, the citizens, do not have time to look over your shoulders constantly. We pay you to not bankrupt us, to give the community a good quality of life, not just survive. And we find out too late you're spending money we don't have. We will remember this at election time. Maybe you should have thought of spending how much extra money we have on a warm problem, warm housing or affordable housing. Maybe that's a better way to spend the money, if we have so much to spend. We don't need to buy now and we make, let the market decide, not someone who says he's giving you a great deal. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item seventeen, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.